As the Mayor pro tem of the town of Clayton, I call this regular business meeting of regular Town Council meeting to order. I ask that you rise as we pledge allegiance to the flag and remain standing for our invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for guiding us as we govern the business for the town of Clayton. We ask that you continue to wrap your arms of care around the McLeod family as they grieve the loss of Mavorine. For it's in your name, we pray. Amen. Maybe six. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, sir. It's being requested that we add an item under eight, under new business, and that item be eight E to consider the approval of the contract for our interim town manager.
So noted. We'll add that to the agenda.
Thank you.
Next up is the consent agenda.
Move we approve.
Second. All opposed. Versa Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Next up, we have introductions and special presentations. Like to introduce our library director, Joy Garrettson.
Counsel, I brought a friend tonight, Grace Davis. She's our children's library director. I'm going to tell you a little bit about our summer reading program, and then Grace is going to tell you some of the specifics of the children's summer reading program, which is going to be crazy this summer, and then we'll show you a very short video. This year, our summer reading program theme is TAILS, T-A-I-L-S, and TALES, T-A-L-E-S. We're doing programs for children, adults, and teens. We have gotten a new app that we're going to use. It is free from the state library. It's called Read Squared. So people can come in, they can register on the app, they can log all their books, they can find out about programs, and join challenges, and get little badges. So it's a really nice, easy way for people to be integrated into our program, and it also connects them to our catalog, which is awesome. For the teen and adult programs, the teens are doing, they've started up a new book club. So they started this book club in COVID, when COVID started back in March. They started the book club in the summer of 2020, and it's been going all year, and it's finally going to get to be in person. So they're really excited about that. And then they also started a craft club last year during COVID, and that's been going strong. And then they have a couple of events that I'm really excited about. One of them that Pam is going to talk about connects in with the Last Friday in Clayton. We're always trying to find great ways to connect to what's going on in town already. Teens are always saying, we wish there was stuff to do in Clayton, and now there is. And so we're really excited to be connecting in with that. For the adults, we're definitely doing some of our regular programming, but we're really pushing our collection. We have gotten a ton of new books. Once we knew that we were going to be able to use the money that had been allocated towards our book budget, we've really just been beefing up our collection. So we're going to be pushing all the adults to get back to reading, because I know some of us, myself included, might have found it hard to read in the past year. So we're really excited about that. And Grace, I'm going to let you tell everybody about the crazy stuff you've got planned.
Yeah, absolutely. Hi, Grace, children's librarian. I could not be more excited. We have the TAILS theme, which means we've got tons of animal-themed programming this summer, including lots of programming with live animals. I'm particularly excited about the Piedmont Wildlife Center. They're going to be coming and bringing five of North Carolina's wildlife ambassadors. So we'll have reptiles, mammals, and birds of prey. They're going to be bringing like hawk and an owl, and the kids will get to interact with those up close. And I'm super excited about all the other North Carolina organizations that we're collaborating with for programming. So we've got the North Carolina Symphony, we've got the Arboretum, we've got Beekeepers, we've got Bat Experts, we've got the Herpetological Society. So we've got snakes, and kittens, and bats, and all sorts of storytimes, kind of every cuddly, slimy, spiky creature you can find, and lots of library, awesome library programs along with it. So I could not be more excited to have the kiddos back in person. Yeah, hire a children's librarian and then tell them they can't be face to face with the kids. It's torture. So I'm very excited to have the kids back.
Thanks, Grace. And so I'm going to play a quick video, just 40 seconds. Nader, y'all know that Nader is amazing, and he has showed that. Once again, he put together some videos of the staff just talking about the programs coming up. So I'm going to play that real quick. Sorry, y'all. Oh, I think I just saved the photo to the slide deck, and I'm not going to pull up my entire email, but we'll have those on Facebook. I know there's one on Facebook right now. So let me grab it.
In the meantime, so this year, the children's program is moving towards, there's been lots of studies that have been going on about intrinsic motivation versus extrinsic motivation for children and getting them to read. And basically, what all the studies say are, the way you get kids to read is you give them books and you read with them. You don't have to bribe them with prizes. You don't have to, and they kind of are super smart humans where they realize, hey, you're giving me a prize. Does that mean I need to be bribed to read? And so we're trying to move towards this being an experience of learning and growing, and having fun, and that the reward for reading is reading, which really helps along the road as it gets harder and harder to read as you get older and it gets more advanced. So we're really excited.
It's okay. We're just not going to do the video tonight. We'll do it later. Sorry.
Thank you, Joy and Grace. It's amazing to think that when I was young, I went to Story Hour at the library on Thursdays, and that Story Hour has turned into this huge program that offers so much more, and it's really exciting. Thank you for everything y'all do. Next up, we have public hearings. We'll start with the presentation of the fiscal year 2122 budget, and we'll hear from our town manager, Rich Capola.
Good evening, members of Town Council. Rich Capola, interim town manager. It's my pleasure to be in front of you this evening to discuss the fiscal year 22 budget. I know we met about a month ago at the end of May to kind of do the kickoff of work, or the work session to discuss the many months of work that's been put into this, developing this budget. So tonight, we do have a public hearing for the residents to provide input. But much of this presentation that you will see will be very similar to what we went over in May. So just as a review, like I mentioned, this has been the culmination of many, many, many man-hours of work since really starting in December. We continue, we worked on the mid-year budget to help get a snapshot of where we were for the fiscal year 21 budget, but really that also was kind of a kickoff to, starting off FY22 planning and budgeting for this exact budget. Since January, we've been meeting as departments. We've had a council retreat, obviously, in March, where we discussed some of the reorganization and some of the other elements that we wanted to focus on with this year's budget. And then really, since then, it's been getting to the dollars and cents of really getting to this balanced budget. Here we sit, basically, earlier, we said, in May, we did meet for the budget work session. We have incorporated some of your comments into this final, or into this proposed budget as it sits today. But really, where we are right now is today, presenting the budget and opening the public hearing. That's the culmination of this. At this point, it'll be up to the will of the council to either approve, or we may recommend waiting till the next meeting, just so we can make sure the final tweaks are put with some of the changes that I'll mention here today. So really, this slide is a snapshot of where we stand today with the budget that's proposed. Not going to get into the individual line items there, but you can see all the elements of the budget are represented, from salaries and contract services all the way through our capital outlay. Effectively, what we have is approximately a $35.6 million general fund budget. The water and sewer fund is approximately $32.4 million, and the electric fund is proposed at $15.9. That basically sums up to approximately an $84 million operation for fiscal year 22 to carry out all the good services from the town. And these numbers should look very similar to what you saw in May. There may be some slight changes, but for the most part, the bottom-line numbers of where we are, the total budget lines haven't changed. Some highlights from the budget as proposed. The $35.6 million budget did require a $0.9 million fund balance appropriation. Those are for those one-time costs that we foresee or that we've had incorporated into the budget. The water and sewer fund is a part of $0.4 million fund balance appropriation. It also assumes that $3.6 million of the ARP funds that we anticipate getting during this fiscal year will be applied. Specifically, that $3.6 million is tagged to go towards one of the water tank construction projects that we discussed in the past. The electric fund is balanced with a $0.3 million fund balance. Again, one-time costs, investing back into our system. But the big highlight of the budget for this year would be the 36 new positions that we've discussed, total cost of approximately $2.1 million. We've had a lot of discussions about the needs of the town currently, particularly with needing the horsepower to deliver on some of the projects and initiatives that we've kind of come out of the gate on and just need to be able to pull, you know, push over the goal line, as well as just normal growth. You know, the organization continues to expand, or needs to continue to expand as our services and demands increase as well. So the major assumptions that we worked on into this budget, or worked into this budget, no property tax is proposed to balance the budget this year. Our anticipated adverbal and property tax growth will be about approximately 5.6% based on the numbers, the historical numbers, as well as what Robert Mackay's crunched from the financial standpoint. Property tax collection rate, we did lower that to approximately 98.5%. We do feel as though we should be able to collect better than that, but just to be conservative, we want to make sure that we are being realistic with what we anticipate bringing in. Sales tax revenues has been really the highlight of the last year or so. During COVID and the pandemic, you know, there was real concern about how our funding streams were going to be impacted. As you can see, sales tax has grown significantly over the last year. This year, we are actually budgeting approximately 3% higher, which is still a conservative estimate based on the numbers. I've got some graphs that are coming up here that can kind of show you that growth. But we do feel as though there is going to be additional sales tax revenue than we have had assumed in previous years. The other assumption here is that the development revenue, which has been another highlight of the pandemic, that development revenue has continued as normal, and we do anticipate that to remain steady into fiscal year 22. So some of the impacts or benefits for the employees. This year, we took a little bit different approach with regards to some of the salary adjustments. There's actually a pool that represents 3% of the total salary costs. That includes not just the salary, but all the benefits associated with it. We've met as an executive team to discuss how this money, these monies could be utilized this year. Many of you are aware that we haven't really done a full position and classification study the last two years, as well as our merit program was in the, was basically being revamped over the last year. So our recommendation from the executive team that I'm presenting to you would be to take that 3% pool and make it effective for all employees on July 1st, with the hope that, that second bullet point there, that when we continue doing the mid-year review like we did this past year, if there is an opportunity for you all to do some sort of additional COLA or other salary adjustment for staff mid-year, we will definitely bring you those options once we see how all of our assumptions through the year work out. But that would be, our recommendation would be to implement that 3% salary increase July 1. Other impacts, the state health plan, the cost of that is going up 7%. We are absorbing that cost as we've traditionally done. So the individual employee will not see any impact there. And then the 1.2% retirement fund contribution, that's a standard increase that's been on the books. So that's, again, not an impact directly to the individuals, but they'll see that additional contribution as part of their benefit package. Utility rates, that first bullet point represents the water and sewer rates. We are recommending a 5% water and 9.5% sewer rate increase for this year. That 7.42% represents a typical 4,000 gallon per month user. These numbers are consistent with what we've shown over the last few years. Obviously, we've got some significant projects in the hopper, as well as others that are coming up that we will need to utilize revenues to offset. So again, these 5% and the 9.5% are recommended to go into effect July 1 as part of this budget. With regard to electric, excuse me, electric rates, we are not proposing any rate increase for electric customers this year. However, we do want to note that for both the water and sewer model, as well as the electric rate model, we are looking at continued increases from sewer, like we've discussed the last several years. And then next year, we will have to look at what our revenues are, basically, our revenue generation is, because right now, we will be looking at a potential rate increase next year for the electric system. Couple other minor updates since the work session. First thing with the reorganization that was discussed back in March at the retreat, creating a different reporting structure for the two deputy town managers. We have spun off a formalized property maintenance department within the budget now. So effectively, what was the property maintenance division under Public Works is now a standalone department that reports to Dolores, to Deputy Manager Gill. That now has been completed within the budget document. The dollars don't change. Robert just moved them from that one division to its own department. Since our last discussions at the work session, Chief Tartt has come to me with a request to add an additional part-time position. We have a person retiring that was currently wearing two hats within his department, and with that retirement, we would like to go ahead and spin off a formalized part-time accreditation manager. I think that was, I think it's a good move, and I think we're going to see the benefit on both sides, both the existing position, as well as having somebody that's focused mainly on that accreditation. And then the last thing, last bullet point there, we've had a lot of moving parts over the last few years with regards to positions and reporting structures. Now that we've got a more, that we've kind of formalized what that organizational chart looks like, we did do a pretty exhaustive dive into the overall position, master position list and position structure. That's all been reconciled at this point. And so there may be some dollars that move from one, you know, one category, or excuse me, one department to another, but for the most part, again, the top end, the total budget did not change. Got a few graphs here. I'll spend a little bit of time on, but these are all things I think you guys, we went through at the work session. Just a general, the historical view of what the general fund looks like over the last several years. Obviously, you can kind of see that we are trending with the growth that we have seen in the region, as well as specifically to Clayton. You'll pretty much see that same general trend on all these graphs, which is an indication of our growth. Sales tax revenue, again, that was a bit steeper climb here over the last year and a half or so, or last year or so. So we do have a pretty healthy outlook on that for next year, but still being conservative in where we feel like we're going to end up. Adverbal and tax revenue, again, that's that 5.6% assumed growth for next year, trending, again, showing that growth curve here over the last several years. Utility sales tax revenue, we expect that to remain pretty close to flat for next year. Again, Robert's done a really good job of kind of forecasting a lot of these numbers, and we feel pretty confident that we'll hit those marks in the coming year. Building permit revenue, we are showing a slight increase next year. We do have several larger projects that we are know are going to be coming down, you know, coming down the pipe, as well as just the increased demand on, you know, in growth, the building permit. The demands on our building officials in our inspections department right now are significant, and I think you can see the large growth that we've had over the last several years. Overall, our debt service projections are in really good shape as well. You can see we've retired a lot of debt. I do want to remind you that we will have new debt coming on, particularly in the general fund with the Parks Bond, as well as just, you know, the water and sewer side. Obviously, we've got a small project that we got to fund, and so that obviously will be spinning up as well. But overall, our debt to expenditures ratio is within metrics. Again, our expenditures continue to grow, but overall debt has not been too burdensome on the overall function of the department, of the fund. So general snapshot of where we're at in terms of fund balance, again, these numbers are subject to final audit and reporting. So I'll look at Robert if he really wants to drill into the dollars and cents of it. But the total fund balance, you can see at the bottom there is approximately, approximately $18.5 million right now, with some assumptions in there with regard to how we will close out this final, this final FY21 budget. So again, final numbers to be determined once he completes office, but this is a pretty accurate, or this is an accurate representation of where we feel like we are today. So just kind of bringing it around, from a financial policy, the council has a goal of 30% or greater in terms of fund balance projection. We're estimating that with this budget, we would have approximately a 33.2% fund balance, so within, essentially, within the policy. For next year, our percentage overall debt, we have For next year, our percentage overall debt, we have, like to stay under 2.5%. This budget has us just right about 0.4%. So again, staying within our policies. From financial, excuse me, from a debt service, less than 15% is our goal, 4.8% is our projection within policy. Ten-year payout ratio, we look to be greater than 55%. Right now, we are at 95.8. Again, new debt will come on, but certainly are on a good track right now. From water and sewer fund, as well as electric fund, their, their metrics are looked at a little bit different. That's the typical metric that you would analyze the health of your system would be cash on hand. Our policy for the water and sewer department would be to have a minimum of 200.75 days cash on hand, and the electric fund is 98.55. With this budget, we are projecting approximately 301 days of, of cash on hand for the water and sewer and 164 days for electric. So again, within policy. So with that, I would like to take a minute to, to thank the executive team. Obviously, we've had some changes here over the last few months, and every one of these folks have stepped up to really assist myself as well as the overall town, really to bring this thing kind of so we could have it in a position to bring before you tonight. I also like to thank all the staff, a lot of department heads, and, and all the staff within each of those departments have been really been working tirelessly over the last six months really to get to this point. So we're excited to be able to discuss this with you tonight, and certainly, you know, all the, all the hard work that they've put into it, we do appreciate that. And then last, just a special thanks to, to the council. I think we've had a lot of good discussions here over the last few months, particularly in where our, where our, where our needs really are, and really you guys supporting us to try to get the resources we need to deliver on some of the, you know, the, the projects and other initiatives that, that the residents are really looking for. So just want to say thank you all as well for your assistance, for your input and guidance. With that, I'm happy to answer any of your questions. It is a public hearing, so we can move to that as well.
Mr. Grantis.
Just a couple of questions, Rich. First of all, I think it's a great budget, and I know that you and the staff worked tirelessly to get us to where we are. And I personally want to thank each and every one of the members for getting us to where we are, especially during the trying situations we've had over the last year. With respect to the water sewer rate increase, correct me if I'm wrong, but as far as, as what that means in terms of dollars per month, does that equate out to be approximately $6 a month for the, the folks, the citizens?
Yeah, that is correct. So for a typical 4,000 gallon per month user, the dollars and cents of that would be approximately a $6 increase per month.
And then I do believe that we received an improved bond rating over this last year. Could you speak to that for just a moment?
Actually, I'll let Mr. Mackay speak to that because it's the fruit of his labor, so I'll let him give you guys the, the update there.
Yes, so we, during Moody's annual review, Moody's upgraded the town from AA2 to AA1. The town had an actual raw score of AAA, first time ever, but Moody kept us at AA1. So that's one notch up. So we're very well positioned with that in upcoming GO bond.
And could you explain just a little bit about what that means for us?
Well, beyond the, I guess, the prestige of having a credit rating upgrade from AA1, it will result in some sort of nominal, perhaps as many, somewhere between 25 and 50 basis points, I'm going to guess, on the interest rate. So we should see a slight favorable adjustment on interest rates with our GO bond offering. The market doesn't make huge distinctions when you get into the AA range. It's very, the band, the width between those ratings is pretty nominal, maybe not more than 50 basis points, which is a half a percent. So we'll see some favorable movement, but it's not going to be, you know, like 1% or above like that. I would, I would say probably 25 basis points, quarter percent.
If it helps.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other members of council? Yeah. No other comments from council. We'll open it up, open this public hearing for public comments, please. If you wish to speak, come forward, state your name and address for the council.
My name is Alan Tu. I have one question, and either I didn't hear it or it wasn't discussed, and that is the impact of this on the tax rate, the adverbal and tax rate. Does anybody know what that is, whether it's, will remain constant or decline or increase? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tu.
I apologize if I went through that too quickly, but I believe. Here on our assumptions, bullet point number one does say that the tax rate will remain at the 0.58 cents, so there is no change recommended.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, I'll close this public hearing and turn it over to the council for your, this guidance.
I think we'll just continue the public hearing until the next meeting.
Mr. Mayor Protam, I believe that there have been some minor changes made since the last review that we had, and I think it would be appropriate if we were to continue this particular item on the agenda until our next meeting before we take a vote. That way, we would have the, the updated version of, of the budget.
Okay. You put that in a motion for us, Mr. Grantis?
Yes.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. This item will be continued until the next meeting. Next on the agenda is item 2021-36-AAnX, the Ashcroft Phases 7 and 8 annexation.
Good evening, Mayor Protam, Thompson, members of the town council. My name is Jeff Keynes, land use planner with the town of Clayton. Tonight, be a brief presentation for the annexation of Ashcroft Phase 7 and 8, file number 2021-36-AnX. The overall lot size proposed to be annexed is just over 35 acres. It's currently under construction. They're finalizing the infrastructure for the property now to, I believe, it's either recorded or going to be recorded for legal lots of record. Building permits would be the next step, but for whatever reason, the property was not annexed prior to this point, so we just want to make sure we're dotting i's, crossing our t's, and we have proposed this annexation for the town for future development for residential The overall color right there, the property is hatched with the overlay. You can see how it goes into the already platted subdivision to the south. So with that, I'll just conclude my subdivision, answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Jeff. Any questions from council? This has been noted as a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please step forward, state your name and address. And we'll do one at the time, please. Thank you.
Good evening, folks. My name is Kevin Flatley. I'm a resident of Atwood Drive there, the north side, abutting the property in question. And I don't know that this is the proper forum for me to be speaking at, but all of the residents along the north side of Atwood Drive object to the annexation. Reason being, there are tremendous problems with drainage. The developer has basically been not available to us. In my particular case, I believe that the developer is in violation of a number of laws. I have a copy of a letter we're going to be sending to the homeowners association and to, not to the developer, because the developer apparently is someone that I never even heard of until yesterday. I, I was under the impression that Providence was a developer, and I don't know if there's a relationship between them and the actual developer, Hearth something or other. But I would like to present this letter to the council, simply as a matter of record.
Yes, sir. You can hand that to the clerk, and she'll make sure we get copies of that.
All right. And again, my intent here tonight is, is just to have it on the record that we object to the annexation.
Yes, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak on the Ashcroft Phases 7 and 8 annexation request? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, turn it over to council. Mr. Bond.
I've got a question for Jeff. Jeff, if you could make up. Jeff, are you aware of all the storm and drain problems this gentleman speaks of?
I'm not aware of the details of it. Specifically for this subdivision, I am not, but I'm on the planning side, so they may have contacted someone on the engineering side for storm drainage. So I've not been personally contacted, nor do I believe anyone from the planning department has been contacted regarding storm drainage for this subdivision or any of the surrounding subdivisions.
Josh, maybe Josh could be.
Good council, Joshua Berry, town engineer. I am not aware of any specific complaints to date. That doesn't mean that they're not, and staff are working through them, but off the top of my head, I am not aware of any. This particular portion, I will say, was reviewed before we took over the stormwater road control. It was reviewed by the county, so this is one that has been transitioned, but off the top of my head, not aware of the specific ones, but we're certainly able to reach out and get some contact information and see what's going on, see what we can do out there.
So basically, the county's been handling this stormwater problem on this deal?
The approval of the project came through the county. When it came to us, we did take over jurisdiction as far as enforcement of the plan that was approved by them. So we are currently have jurisdiction over the road control and everything, but just from a plan and how the drainage was all initially laid out and initially planned, that was reviewed and all by the county.
I want to ask, would you get with this gentleman tonight and get his information?
Yes, sir.
Simply to help resolve some of these issues?
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Mr. Mayor Protam, I make a motion, we adopt ordinance 2021-06-03.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Next up, we have Jeff Keynes with the planning department to speak about the adoption of, speak about the Lumen project. I believe we're looking at a continuance.
Jeff Keynes, again, with the town of Clayton. Yes, we are, the project has been requested for continuance to a date certain. In this case, it is going to be, I believe, July 19th, 2021, and this is for all three applications, the 2020 103-PDD Lumen's rezone, for 2020 104, 104 SD Lumen's subdivision, and the Lumen's development agreement.
Okay, yes, sir. I'd like, I'll entertain a motion to approve continuance of all three of the, the next three items, C, D, and E, to the July 19th meeting.
You want to use that as a motion you want me to do? You do it.
If you want to.
Mr. Mayor Protam, I'd like to move that we move items C, D, and E to be continued to July 19th, 2021.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Next up, under old business, we have a memorandum of understanding the Triangle Land Conservancy in the town, and that'll be presented by Scott Bernard, our Parks and Recreation Director.
Good evening, Mayor Protam, council members, administration. Joining me this evening is Leigh Anne Hammerbacher with Triangle Land Conservancy, and I'm just going to speak briefly about this opportunity. It's one that we've been really working through for almost my entire tenure here with the town. And, but what we're asking for y'all to do tonight is to authorize the town manager to, to sign this memorandum of understanding between the town of Clayton and the Triangle Land Conservancy. So shortly after I came on board with the town, we were looking through our portfolio of properties, and we have about 340 acres known as the river, river tract that we lease from the town, from the state of North Carolina. It's one of those dollar a year deals. This is a piece of property that state parks had come into ownership of, but didn't have the ability or funds to develop this property as it does above the river. It really just serves a conservation or preservation purpose for them as it protects the water quality of the river as well as provides habitat for many of the creatures that we enjoy as we walk along that greenway. So one of the few allowed uses of this property per this lease agreement between the town and the state of North Carolina was for the development of trails. Well, not ironically, I guess, it was fortuitous that this property adjoins the Williamson Preserve, which is owned and operated by the Triangle Land Conservancy. And this is a piece of property that they had acquired because of its significance, both culturally, environmentally, in this region, which does overlap the Wake County border. And so in, in talks with them, as well as a, a third party, the Triangle Offroad Cycling Group, we, we saw joint, mission overlap of ride recreation on this space, both hiking and cycling trails that would be accessible from the greenway and as well from the Wake County side, from Mile Plantation Road. So this is something that, that, you know, within probably a month of me being on board, I came before y'all as, as a body and said, hey, we would like to partner with them so that they can apply for grants, they score better than we would to, to seek funding to develop some of these trails on the property. Y'all authorized that. They were successful in two different grant cycles and receiving funds to develop these trails currently on the ground. We have roughly nine miles. At completion, we could be 16, 17 plus miles of trail, which would make this the longest single-track trail system in the Triangle region. So that would put us, you know, in excess in one location of what is offered in Chatham County, in Orange County, and in Wake County, all in one, all in one location. And it's a unique location. You can access it from both Wake and Johnston County. So with that, I want to turn it over just briefly to Leigh Anne to talk about, to y'all about the value of this partnership to TLC and some of the other work that they're doing in our region, and then we'll come back and ask for y'all to authorize manager Capola's autograph.
Yeah, thanks so much for having us this evening. I'm with Triangle Land Conservancy, which is a nonprofit land trust. We've been incorporated as a land trust since 1983 and have helped protect over 21,000 acres in the Triangle region. We cover six counties, including Johnson, and in Johnson County itself have helped protect about 5,000 acres of land. Our latest and greatest nature preserve is the 405 acre Williamson Preserve, which is is located less than four miles from here. We had planned to open this on Earth Day of last year, but because of the pandemic, had a little bit of postponement, but were able to open it in September. And we've seen amazing visitations since it's opened up to the public. On sunny days, it's common for us to get 100-plus visitors a day to the preserve, and a lot of those visitors are actually entering from the greenway. So we're seeing a lot of access through Riverwalk. We have nine miles of trail on the ground now. Most of that is on TLC's preserve, but we have plans and funding for a second phase, which would be mostly on the Riverwalk Trail System. So as Scott said, with this memorandum in place, we can help create one of the largest single-track trail systems in the Triangle, as well as this amazing nature preserve. When you put the two properties together, you're well over 700 acres. We've been working with the public and community a lot. We have a system of trail stewards and volunteers who help us maintain and improve the trails. And we've also raised close to $300,000 in both public and private funding to install the trail system. So we hope that the town is ready to move forward with this agreement, and we look forward to partnering with y'all in the future. And would also love to take y'all on a tour or invite you out any day to see the trail system and the property on the ground. And this just is the map of the existing trail system and some information on the preserve. One thing I'll note is that this is a little unique for TLC in that this is our first farm and nature preserve. So in addition to the nine miles of trail, we're partnering with local farmers to provide land for new farming operations. We currently have a cattle farmer, an annual production farmer, beekeeper, and a cut flower grower on site. Take any questions or?
Thank you very much. I look forward to taking a tour. That'll be nice. Any members of the council have any questions or comments? Mr. Grantis.
I have a few, Scott mainly for you. I noticed in the MOU that if there are improvements to be made, that would be our responsibility. So three of the questions I have, one, will improve, are we looking to do improvements? And if so, what would those be? And what would the anticipated cost be? And is that budgeted?
So the improvements that we anticipate are all single-track trails, and they would be installed in partnership with the Triangle Land Conservancy and Tork, the Triangle Offroad Cycling Group. These would be done either through in-kind services or we would apply for grants. And then the beautiful thing about these natural surface trails is that your long-term maintenance cost is extremely minimal. You start having issues with the trail, you just simply relocate the trail, say, say, I'm on the trail, and we start having problems with this section of trail. We'll relocate the trail over into this area. So there isn't a, there isn't a budget item associated with this, and at any point in time that there would be, we would be working with a partner, either Tork, Triangle Land Conservancy, or perhaps even the state of North Carolina to go after either recreational trails program, grant, or an adopt the trails grant.
Okay. And is any part of this property have any hazardous material issues at all?
Yes, sir. Or there were no, no encumbrances?
Okay. That takes care of the last question then.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Anyone else? No one has any questions. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the agreement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next up, we have land acquisition easements, and the presenter is Joshua Baird, our town engineer.
Good evening again, Joshua Baird, town engineer. Before you tonight is an item regarding land acquisition associated with a new newswastewater reclamation facility. As you're aware, there's multiple projects associated with that, the plan itself, as well as transmission and linear projects. Three main ones, the first was the access road water line, an early grading package that had some acquisition. That one is complete. We're moving into construction on that one. The second one, the Little Creek Transmission, is basically taking, that flows from Little Creek across the ridge. And that one itself, there's about, or almost 40, technically 37, permanent and temporary construction easements associated with that line to bring that flows across the ridge to the new site. Happy to report that 31 of those have been obtained to date. Very exciting for a project. So we have six remaining. Four of those we see are moving forward, final negotiations, just finalizing some signatures, attorney's review. However, there are two of those that we do not foresee being able to reach a settlement. They are properties with pin numbers 166805, 190194, and property 166918411304. Also, those easements are described in the resolution before you. Multiple attempts have been made. We also have a land acquisition agent that has been working diligently to obtain those and obtain a settlement. We have obtained appraisals, so we know exactly what fair and just compensation would be for those. Formal offer letters, certified mails have been submitted. However, working since March, we still have not been able to come to a settlement, and we do not foresee those two occurring. Per general statutes, 4840, the town does have the right to exercise imminent demand condemnation on the properties. Before you tonight, we request council approved resolution authorizing town staff and attorneys to proceed with condemnation of these two easements associated with the Little Creek Transmission Project. With that being said, upon the notice of action letter going out by attorneys, we will still work and try to come to a settlement on the properties before we have to file, but to be able to keep the project on track, we do request authorization of that tonight. And then I will just also note the third project, and that's the ECA transmission line from the industrial area, East Clayton industrial area. We are still kicking off of that, and so there are still another date that we would be coming for you with any hurdles that we have with that transmission line before the end of the year. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions? Turn it over to council for action. Mr. Grantis.
Mr. Mayor Protam, I make a motion that we adopt resolution 2021-24.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Joshua.
Yes, sir.
Now, moving into new business, and first up is our audit contract. Our presenter is Robert Mackay, the finance director.
Good evening, Mayor Protam, members of council. Tonight, we're asked of council to approve the audit contract for the current fiscal year, which was fiscal year 2021. There's no change in the fee structure compared to last year. Fees ranges, ranges between 28 and 30, $30,000. And what drives that typically is the number of single audits that the auditors require. Any sort of federal funding or state funds we get, if the expenditures exceed 750, he has to perform a separate single audit on that program. So that's the reason for the range.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Mackay? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor Protam, I make a motion, we authorize execution of the contract.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, Rob.
All right. Thank you.
Next on the new business, we have Code of Ordinance Chapter 32 update.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Protam and members of the council, manager, clerk, and attorney. Dick Hales with the planning staff. As you recall, we've recently reconstituted the town's Board of Adjustment. They've had several meetings, and one question that was raised at some of those meetings was whether the board, which is constituted of both town appointments and ETJ appointments, have some same voting rights, in particular whether ETJ members were fully permitted to vote on matters within the town limits. And upon consultation with the town attorney and others, they drafted some clarifying language, which proposed to be added into Chapter 32 of the code. And in addition, while they were at it, they thought perhaps the same clarity could be added to the planning boards, ruled in 32, Chapter 32 as well. So with that, any questions on the specific language for the attorney? But we're happy to bring that to you this evening.
Mr. Bun.
So basically, it's giving the ETJ board members a right to vote on town?
That's correct.
And byes.
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve ordinance 2021-06-04.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next up, we have Brandon Carroll with the Code of Ordinance, Chapter 54 of Data and Water Conservation.
Good eve, good evening, Mayor Protam and council. We are here today to ask for some changes to Chapter 54 of our Code of Ordinances, the water shortages and conservation measures. As you know, we've had some issues with Johnston County having to issue water advisories for consumption of water over the last couple of weeks. We purchase all of our water from Johnston County, so we have to mirror a lot of their ordinances and policies. So we've just kind of taken those and reconstructed some of the chapters we have and made some updates to it. The updates that we're bringing today are the addition of a mandatory watering schedule. Johnston County already has a watering schedule that they require all of their residents to use when they are irrigating their lawns or outdoor uses. So we are basically just mirroring their order, our schedule, and we will continue to do so as long as we purchase water from Johnston County. The second item is in addition to the language of Section 54.09. Basically, at this point, we are going to combine our water shortage and conservation supply plan along with our Chapter 54 ordinance. The water conservation and shortage response plan will be brought back later once it's approved by the state. We last did our response plan in 2018, so it's due for an update. And then finally, we're going to remove Section 54.10, installation of meters from the section. It just does not fit with the water supply plan. And as you can see here, this is the water schedule Johnston County uses. We will use their schedule. There will be no watering on Mondays. Even addresses will water on Wednesday, Friday, and Sunday. Odd street addresses will water Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday. And so here's some examples of the language that we have combined into the two sections that they will be in both the water conservation supply plan and the Chapter 54 of our ordinance. The only major change that we will be including is currently the ordinance says the enforcement of, once we get into water crisis, will be by police officers. We are also adding code enforcement officers to that, and then the monitoring of this will be by town staff and of the AMI monitoring system, the automatic water system. We can tell what meters are running on what days. And then here's Chapter 54.10. This is the section that will be removed from the ordinance. And then, like I stated earlier, the water conservation and shortage response plan is currently at the state review, and once that is approved by the state, we will bring that back for approval by the council. Any questions?
Seeing no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
In your package you have before you, we have nine intersections that we're proposing some
Mr. Mayor Protam, I'll make a motion that we adopt a ordinance 2021-06-05, Code of
changes to. And basically, what we're really doing here is trying to improve safety in these intersections. So these have come to light with the fiscal year 21 road rehab project, as well as the
Ordinances relating to Chapter 54, updating the water conservation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
parking lot project.
All in favor?
And the way we are proposing to improve the safety is really with stop signs, so going
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
All right. Thank you, council.
Thank you, Brandon.
from three-way stops, four-way stops, putting some high-visi crosswalks in, or a combination
And next up, we have Blake Mills, our Assistant Director of Public Services, to speak about
of both. Now, in the spirit of time, I'm not going to go through every one of the nine intersections,
street intersection pavement markings and stop signs.
but I'd like to talk about two intersections in particular. And very familiar with these intersections because they're all right by Town Hall, and it's on Church Street. And the first one I'll talk about is Church Street and Second Street. Right now, Church and Second is a two-way stop, and it has the church, it has the library, it has Town Hall, and we just recently put in a no parking zone. Now, during the day, they have, you know, childcare pickup times, and we get some major traffic congestion on that roadway, and that particular intersection now is kind of not as safe as it could be. And one of the big issues with safety there is when they queue through that, along Second Street, when you have bigger vehicles that are queuing and they really want to turn right onto Church Street, they are actually preventing somebody that wants to go northbound on Church Street from actually seeing through that intersection, especially when you have bigger vehicles like trucks and SUVs. You can't see, you have to inch up, but they're not stopping on Second Street. So in order to improve safety in that intersection, it really has to be similar to what we did at Fayetteville and Second. We made that basically a four-way stop. So we have to kind of mirror that on Church Street. So we're going to do pretty much the same thing there, four-way stops with high visibility all around the intersection. The other intersection that is related to this is really Horn and Church Street. And at that intersection, it used to be a through condition when we, when we had the parking lot, Horn Street went right through. Now the parking lot's been built. It's not a through condition anymore. We put in basically no through traffic there. We really want to encourage people not to go through the parking lot. It's really not meant to be a throughway. They really have to, if they go that far, they really have to turn on Church Street. Now, with that project, some handicap ramps are put in, and we have a lot of the church traffic and the kids going across to the newly developed church property across. Now, with that project, some handicap ramps are put in, and we have a lot of the church traffic and the kids going across to the newly developed church property across on Horn Street. So we're, what we're proposing there is to put a high-visi crosswalk there and to put a high-visi crosswalk at the intersection on Horn Street on, in the, basically going on the north side of the street. We're going to have another high-visi crosswalk, as you can see on that diagram. Right here. So those two high-visi crosswalks will actually improve safety in that intersection because what's happening now is with that Horn Street as a through, everybody has to stop there and they have to wait for traffic to come. And that's actually delaying them. So when we, when we have a, basically a four-way or three-way stop at that intersection, it's going to improve that safety for those two movements and the pedestrian safety for people that are walking through those intersections. So those are two that I just wanted to address and give you guys, you know, a little bit better explanation on. The rest of them, certainly you're free to ask questions on. One thing that's, the good news of all this is it's, we've had a lot of concerns expressed by citizens, communities, HOAs about improving safety, you know, traffic-wise, pedestrian safety, side, basically sidewalks, pedestrian crossings, and that sort of thing. We haven't really had a formal process for it. So we've actually newly developed a committee. It's called the Traffic and Safety Committee, and it's got representation basically from all the departments in town, the police, the fire, engineering, public works, planning, economic development, PIO. And we're going to meet every two months to address all the concerns that are brought up by the community, and a lot of them are going to be related to obviously traffic, traffic and, and traffic calming is one of the big ones that's coming up. And what we want to do is, the first order business, we just met Friday, is to really review our policy on, on the traffic calming policy, to make sure that we, we update it to address all the concerns we have today and all the measures that are available and really have a process in there for prioritization of these and having some sort of, you know, basically funding for them, because there's no really funding mechanism for that in place now. So that way, we can, you know, get with the group, develop a policy, bring it back to town council. So that's one of our major initiatives we have. But there's many other initiatives that we've brought up that also have to be addressed as well. So we're going to be working on those pretty diligently and meeting six times a year. So we'll be regularly reporting back to you. So on behalf of answering the questions you have.
Could I ask a favor? When you get this committee together, could you focus on the school zones?
Focus? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
School zones.
School zones is actually one of the ones on the list. Already, we put it on the list. We, we are going to focus on school zones because it's not, it's addressed in some areas but not all areas. So it's a very good one.
I would vote for favorable and blank for a thirty-way. Boy, if I have a vote.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Grantis.
I'm really glad to see that we're doing this because I think it's something that's been needed for quite a while. And I think what you've got here is a great start. And to be able to have this committee meet every other month, I think is a really good idea. So kudos to the team. You've done good.
Anyone else? Thank you, Blake. Next up, item E is approval of the contract with the interim town manager.
Unless we need discussion, I'm making a motion that we approve the contract for the interim town manager.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? And the motion carries. Next, we'll move into staff reports, beginning with the town manager.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Just a couple of quick comments tonight. First, I want to say thank you for that approval that you just made. Happy to serve in any capacity you need me for whatever period you need me to. With that action, though, one of the things that has been challenging the last several weeks is kind of the multiple hats I've been wearing with both trying to fulfill my deputy manager role as well as the interim town manager role. Essentially, in discussions internally, what I'd like to do is go ahead and formally announce Lee Barbie as an interim deputy town manager. He's very familiar with many of the departments that I was current, that I currently manage as well as, obviously has a great history here with the town. So he has the ability to plug in and be able to take some of that workload off my hands at this point. So effectively, he will be fire chief and interim deputy manager for this, for this period of time. So I did want to make the, make that announcement as well as thank Chief Barbie for being willing to step into that role here for the foreseeable future. One other item I did want to mention, recently, the town has had a few new cases of COVID-19. With that, we have looked at our internal practices as well as our protocols. Friday, I did send out some additional information to staff, kind of reiterating what the CDC guidelines as well as some of the other mandates that are in front of us. We will be continuing with our protocols as they've been, as they've, as they've been set for the last several months, including the temperature checks for folks coming in the door as well as wearing masks in certain situations. Those that are vaccinated do have the ability to wear, go without a mask. They have to verify with our wellness and safety manager their status, but effectively, we will continue with those practices moving forward. We are happy to, to announce, too, that we are having an internal vaccination drive this Thursday for staff, where the health department will be bringing folks in to administer vaccinations. We have had many people, several people sign up for that, so it's encouraging that they're, they're looking to move forward with that as well. And we've actually also had some additional conversations with the health department about possibly hosting an event here and open to the public in the near future. So as we, as we work out the details of that, we will go ahead and bring you guys up to speed as well. With that, for me, that's generally it. We do have one other staff report that we can do under the other staff that I'll ask Patrick to come up with, but that's it for me this evening.
Thank you, Rich. Town attorney?
I don't have a report.
Town clerk?
No reports, thank you.
Other staff?
Patrick Pierce, Economic Development Director. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. Just wanted to give you a quick update on the Square to Square Independence Day Street Festival. So something that Amy Sharon came and discussed at the last meeting, and just want to give you a quick update where we're at. We're really excited to bring a festival back to Main Street here. I'm super excited because I've never seen one. It was one of the things that we were very excited about as a family moving to North Carolina and have yet to see. So I know we are all very excited in the Pierce household to be a part of this. It's been really a group effort. Really, all the departments have, have pulled together. We've been working closely with the DDA and with the Clayton Chamber of Commerce on this and really just pulled lots of good partners together here and really hope to have an awesome event. It's going to start with a bicycle parade, so kids will have the opportunity to decorate their bikes, cruise down the street, and there's going to be a giant balloon arch there at Fayetteville Street that they'll be able to go through. So a really cool time for families to get out on wagons and bikes and do all that. Then we're going to have games and activities lined up down the street, a rock climbing wall, a waterslide, face painting, a DJ, some disc golf and football competitions. We're looking at maybe a hot dog eating contest, working with the folks at the Axe Place to see if we can get a, they've got a portable axe throwing booth that we can get out there. So should just be a lot of fun for families all the way around. And there will be free watermelon slices, which I know is a Clayton tradition here, free snow cones, very, very excited about that as well, and a poetry fox. Apparently, it's a fox, a gem, well, maybe it's not a gem, it's a fox, right? All the kids want to know. It's a fox. You give him a word, he sits there on his typewriter and makes you a poem. I'd never heard of it, but it sounds pretty exciting. I know my girls will dig that. So anyways, it's going to be a really fun time. We're continuing to add things, but we've got it mapped out. Again, a lot of great work gone into it, and I'm just really, really excited for July third to get here and be able to all kind of celebrate safely together as a town and as a community. All right. Any questions? Very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Patrick. Any other staff? Okay, we'll move on to informal discussion and public comments. Anyone wishing to speak, step forward, state your name and address for the clerk.
Good evening. My name is Melissa. I live in the Glen Laurel Community Development. I'm also a member of the Women's Club, and I am also a member of the community Main Street Garden. The Main Street Garden and the Women's Club come before the board today to ask for an exception to code section nine-one-point-zero-five. I believe you all should have received letters on this exception. This has to do with the prohibition of non-domesticated animals, keeping up livestock, fowl, and non-domesticated animals prohibited. The garden, which is located at four-thirty-nine East Main Street, has become a popular destination in the community for children and their families to come and learn about vegetable planting, bees, hydroponics, as well as events and activities such as the Christmas holiday display, the Easter egg hunt, and activities around Harvest Festival. During the planning stages of this year's Easter celebration, we acquired six baby hens. Our garden volunteers have expanded our educational curriculum to teach children and their families about the habits, habitats, and care of these fluffy hens. Under volunteer supervision, children are welcome to touch the hens and inquire about their anatomy, feeding schedule, et cetera. Recently, one of the local daycare centers came to the garden and used the chicks in their own learning exercise. And I was, I couldn't help but, when the librarian was here, the children's librarian, she was talking about bringing these live animals to children because we might have all grown up on a farm and we might have all been exposed to chickens and cows, but many younger children are not. And this instructor asked the children, how many have black feathers? How many have white feathers? If we have six hens and each have two feet, how many feet do we have? So this was a little impromptu learning exercise just by them coming through to the Main Street Garden. The questions may seem trivial, but they are not for the child. The questions could be asked in a classroom environment, but nothing compares to a hands-on experience, especially in the world of impersonal and virtual experiences, which we've all been going through in this last year. Unfortunately, we had been informed that this section ninety-one-point-o-five of the code prohibits non-domestic fowl within the city limits of Clayton. Because of the educational value these hens provide, we are requesting an exception be granted to permit the Main Street Garden to house these six hens in a confined area with proper shelter, food, and water to ensure protection for the hens and for the public. Because the hens will not multiply nor will we expand their numbers, their waste will be minimal, yet will provide a secondary nutrient benefit to the garden, which can be further add to our educational materials. Well, while we do not plan or wish to use the hens for any utilitarian purpose, we realize that they will produce eggs at some point. Our purpose here is to then donate these eggs to the Clayton Ministry. Once again, we are asking for this exception and hope that the Mayor Protem and the council can see their way, the educational value to have these hens at the Main Street Garden. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Melissa. We'll certainly take that under advisement. Anyone else wishing to speak?
I will take my mask off so you can hear me, and I don't think that my breath or any of the vapors will get you. So my name is Alan Tu. I am a lawyer. I've practiced here since August nineteen-seventy-one. And in listening, I am encouraged to hear about the traffic plan, and I want to make several comments. One of the things that I would suggest is for them to check, to make sure that all of the sidewalks in there are two, one on the west and one on the east side of Lombard Street where the pavement narrows and there's no yellow marking, and it creates an issue. I walk up and down there, but I would suggest that. And the other thing, and I was talking with the planning director today, relates to traffic. I go to and from here four times, well, four, five times a day. And traffic, and one of the things that I have been acutely aware of over the years is the plan for Clayton's traffic, which included at one time a south connector and the other time a north connector, so that it would provide a parallel dispersment of traffic going east and west from Business and Old Seventy. And of course, Main Street is DOT. What I would hope that someone would contact Campo, and I think that would be the appropriate entity to contact to request some dispersment. When you get a left turn up here between five-thirty and afterwards, traffic has backed all the way up beyond T R Lee's, sometimes halfway down to the brewery headed this way. The other thing is to ask, and if anybody can tell me, I would appreciate a communication, what has happened to the south connector and what has happened to the north connector? Because based upon my understanding, and this goes back a long time, the south connector was to take traffic somewhere in the Guy Road area and bring it. And in order to develop property, I think Dr. Meehan's property and then some of the other property there, they required the dedication of a street, and then it goes across forty-two beside the Utilities Department, and then goes through east and would go through cobblestone and connect and form a T intersection with Ranch Road. But looking at what's happened there, can anybody tell me if that is still a viable option?
So a couple of updates there. Patrick, Patrick Pierce is actually our representative for Campo at this point, so I'll look to him to fill any gaps here. For the south connector, some of the configuration there has been changed with the DOT's project for NC forty-two extension. However, that property that you were saying that was dedicated is incorporated into their design to set up an intersection for a future project to put that road in. With regard to the northern connector, that project, we actually did submit last, last funding round to Campo to try to get the design moved forward in terms of getting their funding match. We did not score enough points to get funding through them. However, we do intend to try to resubmit, potentially adding additional phases to help our scoring in the, in the next rounds, so.
What brought my attention to the north connector was seeing what appears to be an entry to some of the subdivision that's being developed on the old Creech property in there. That was a hundred and some acres. And based upon what I had seen and understood or misunderstood, I don't know if you're familiar with Liberty Loop, but that is developed now, and I think that was in the pathway of the north connector, which was to go out and connect with the road that goes into the, gosh, Caterpillar property along the river. Is that, does anybody know if that's still viable?
And Patrick's going to come up here, but in terms of the northern connector, you're correct, the, what is the Steeplechase development will be realigning a portion of Cover Bridge to kind of take the, the curve out at the intersection. But the development that went through just recently, Ashcroft Phase Two, actually reserves the corridor and dedicates the corridor for the northern connector from Cover Bridge to the south. Patrick, feel free to go and.
I think you, you hit everything right there on the northern connector. I believe it was submitted by Campo for the next round of the STIP, the State Transportation Improvement Plan. So if that gets on and is approved on the STIP, then it'll go into the NC DOT's long-term funding plan there and construction plan. So we're waiting to see that. That's probably still twelve, twelve months out until they've gone through all of their process and we see that, but it is actively being considered for the STIP.
In the meantime, for the development project.
an entry to some of the subdivision that's being developed on the old Creech property in there. That was a hundred and some acres, and based upon what I had seen and understood, or misunderstood, I don't know if you're familiar with Liberty Loop, but that is developed now, and I think that was in the pathway of the north connector, which was to go out and connect with the road that goes into the, gosh, Caterpillar property along the river. Is that, does anybody know if that's still viable?
And Patrick's going to come up here, but in terms of the northern connector, you're correct, what is the Steeplechase development, we'll be realigning a portion of Cover Bridge to kind of take the curve out at the intersection. But the development that went through just recently, Ashcroft Phase Two, actually reserves the corridor and dedicates the corridor for the northern connector from Cover Bridge to the south. Patrick, feel free to go on.
Headed, I think you hit everything right there on the northern connector. I believe it was submitted by Campo for the next round of the STIP, the State Transportation Improvement Plan. So if that gets on and is approved on the STIP, then it'll go into the NC DOT's long-term funding plan there and construction plan. So we're waiting to see that. That's probably still 12, 12 months out until they've gone through all of their process and we see that, but it is actively being considered for the STIP.
In the meantime, for the development projects along that corridor, we are incorporating what is a preliminary alignment that we've, that we had vetted out by an engineering firm last year, incorporated into all those designs.
If there is a committee, I served on a committee years ago, and we met with a representative from, I think the person on the DOT board, and someone from Campo, to develop and to discuss these things. And with the growth here, I just think that that is a critical issue, or else you're going to be facing a gridlock for east to west traffic, and it, I think, will have a significantly adverse impact on the town. So I'd be glad to help with that, or not, if that would help. Thank you.
Just one other thing I mentioned, we have been working, Campo is working on the update to the Metropolitan Transportation Plan. So as part of that, we have highlighted some of these key corridors that you have highlighted, sir, in terms of ones that are of emphasis to the town. So as that plan continues to come together, and our overall transportation plan continues to come together, and the comprehensive plan, we will, those are key areas of concern for us as well, so I appreciate you highlighting those for us. And that's good reemphasis that the things that are on our mind are also the things on the citizens' mind of the town.
Thank you. You can tell there's progress when you measure time, when you measure distance on a time rather than a linear basis, and the projections for travel around here are, it's going to be gridlocked, but that's okay, I remember when there wasn't much here. The other thing, one of the other things that I want, that brings me here, is an issue of parking. The town took care of the town, and you've heard my expression before, but it got rammed down the throat of the neighbors here, unceremoniously, in a way that exemplified how not to do things. It's done, we move forward. But the problem that we have, and I remember discussions, there was an analysis done of downtown business parking, and there was some discussion between a citizen who had a parking lot, and there was about the town controlling it. Well, the town has reached the point that, for significant growth of businesses, and I talked with several people from the planning staff, there is a challenge to any growth of businesses downtown because of the lack of parking. And you've got, what I would like to know as a part of all of this, what is the town's role in this? What can the town do? And then I'm going to give you an example. My office has been, for the past 49 years, within one block of where it is, and it's been there for 38 years. And I'm glad to see all of the growth. One of the things that concerns me, though, is this, and I signed on for it, as we all do as businesspeople in Clayton, when there is an event here, invariably, there's something to clean up, and I'm glad to do that, but it's not something that I seek to undertake on a daily basis. Now, here's what is, and I either misunderstood or did understand, there is currently a request for a variance of parking, the old barber hardware store at the main, at Main and Lombard. The application, and this is the way I read it, and it's interesting, when I first read the application, it gave the implication that the specific request for an additional parking, number of parking spaces, was for one restaurant, which would have hours from 4 until 11, so it would not, 4 to 10 on the weekdays, 4 to 11 weekends, I believe. But with that, it would not conflict with the other uses during the daytime, but what happens is that you have spillover traffic, and that becomes the problem. You've got, the lot there has 44 spaces. There are three restaurants, and I did not learn of this until I talked with somebody, and then I read it again, somebody in the planning department, which two of them, the Cardinal and Little Andre, will operate during lunch and dinner hours. Well, dinner is supper to me, but it's the evening meal. And so in talking with someone from the planning staff, those two places would have 11 to 11 hours. So you've got three restaurant businesses, seven days a week, hours that will overlap concurrently for the evening. So it's got 44 spaces. There is an estimated 81 seats, which will require 27 spaces, that's three seats per, three seats per parking space. But then on top of that, there's 21 for the upstairs, six for the first floor, and 50 for the two restaurants that were approved. So my math, and I wasn't a math major, but it says 107, but then you add to the 107, that's 134 parking spaces. Now, I want, and Crawford and Son is the applicant, and there's been much ado about it, and I do hope to come, and I hope that something, that they are successful. At the same time, I've seen what happens, there are 26 spaces in my parking lot, it's a joint parking lot with the dental folks, and then across the street in Ava Gardner's, and I do, Ava Spencer's, and I don't speak for her. I have talked with her, and she's not in good health, but you're looking at the obvious, and that's a spillover there. And my concern is, once you grant these things, you can't undo them. And then I can handle mine by simply putting some controls on it and having towed them. And what my concern is this, what is the town's role in this? Because downtown development, I'm told that there are other businesses who, businesses who want to come to town, but they don't have parking. But I checked, and I thought, here you have, I think, two and three-quarters times parking, so you've got a significant shortfall of parking with three restaurants that would operate concurrently. And my thought was, the town has a little annex down there across from the Police Palace, and then there is a lot on Horn and Lombard Street that could probably generate 50 or so parking spaces. So can someone tell me what, if any, plans the town has to help alleviate the problem and relieve the burden of spillover parking on the businesses, and they've been down, Clayton Food Down's been down there forever and ever, and so can anybody give me a response to that?
Mr. Tu, we've had a, actually had a lot of discussion about parking lately, and we've come to the consensus through our discussions with each other, that we're going to establish a working group, and have basically a, like a planning session, where we get the right people at the table, and we discuss, what's our vision for parking downtown, and what can we, you know, we look at the old studies, we look at new things, it's time for us to seriously examine this. And you bring up some very valid points, and we've had some discussion among ourselves, and agree that we've got to put the group together, and we've got to make some decisions so that we can have a vision for parking. We can't blindly accept things and not have a plan for the parking. And so I do think that it's time that we sit down at the table and examine it, and put a group together to come up with a vision for that.
Okay. Then one other thing, and I just want to go back, I could not help but bring this up, and this relates to the issue of responsive leadership. And I was here on May 3rd, and a colleague with me at that time, and we are pro tem, please excuse the omission, of your manager, it was a letter commending the town on the hiring of J D Sal. And obviously, shortly after that, things changed. And I have had conversations over time about leadership here, going back four years or more, well, I would say four years, since the last town manager was here. And I could not help and wanted to respond to something that was used in the newspaper article as a waste of the town's money for the $17,800, or somebody correct me on the figures, that was thrown away because, after getting a test drive of the new town manager, and a great deal of success, that was peanuts. If my memory is accurate, I think there was $70-some thousand paid to a search committee for screening the round of applicants, and there were plenty. And then, if what I read was true, shortcomings of the town manager, he, in my opinion, if those were substantiated, the town had cause to fire him. Instead, I think the figure there was $170-some thousand separation agreement to avoid litigation, which it just, I think, strikes me and a number of people I know and talk with, as being something that just did not reflect a strong leadership. And then the other thing is, the man that pulled the town out of the ditch based upon what was in there in the newspaper article, was let go and paid $158,000, if that's correct. So you add all that up, and that's an awful lot of money for someone who was preeminently unqualified based upon performance, or I would say, lack of performance. So then, I have talked with people before, and then I've had a conversation with one elected official that I will not identify, and one of the responses was that morale was low. And I thought about that, and I thought if morale was low, the people who were complaining were the people who were afraid that because of four years of a lack of accountability, their jobs were in jeopardy. So I remember, and I don't thank any of you all on the present council, back in the 80s and early 90s, in the old building, when the leadership had denigrated to personal attacks, things like that, and grudges. And what I take, based upon my conversation, and then just as a lawyer, looking at the things that are reported, if they are true, is that the town needed to get, and should have kept, the person that pulled them out of the ditch, and that one could, I think, based on circumstantial evidence, conclude, or certainly argue strongly, that there was some thin skin on behalf of one of the council members and the mayor, that led to a confrontation, and the message was, we're not going to leave you alone. In any event, we are where we are. I trust and I hope that those of you who may have had any of that personal invective in what was done, will put it aside and move forward, and get us back to where we were. This town is fortunate, it's had good leadership, we need to reinstate that, so thank you, I appreciate your time and your tolerance.
Thank you, Mr. Tu. Are there any other members of the public that wish to speak? Saying that, we'll turn it over to council comments. Mr. Grantis?
Just to follow up with respect to what you had mentioned, Mr. Tu, would love to schedule a work session to discuss downtown parking, downtown overlay.
I agree.
Go ahead and start working with staff to pull that together.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Next, we have, we're going to move into, accept the motion to move into closed session regarding economic development, and we'll take a quick break before we do that. I just wanted to make sure for the public record, Rich, is there any, do we expect any action to come out of that meeting for the people watching?
No, sorry.
Okay, all right. So I will entertain a motion to go into closed session with a 10-minute break before we do that. So moved?
Favored.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll take a 10-minute break. Resume closed session.
That was approved to go back into open session.
Mr. Grass, did you have a...
Yes, I'd like to amend my motion that took us into closed session. I would like to add to that motion to discuss a... Have a discussion about a potential property acquisition.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Undertended motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?